Good afternoon, we are in the totally lively boardroom of the eighteen eighty seven, eighteen eighty seven building on Langston, October eighteenth, twenty twenty three. And I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Mr. Andre?
Here.
Mr. Gayheart?
Here.
Mr. Gannon?
Here.
Mrs. Yersel?
Here.
Mrs. Red, please?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Uh, we do have a quorum and the meeting has been noticed per state statute. Um, so next on the agenda is to interview our school board candidates. Um, before we get to it, get to that, um. Jason, are we gonna do similar to how we did it last time where each, each one of us, like, we just go around and take, um, ask the questions, like, one individual, ask the questions each time?
You could like the, you could start and then go clockwise and then
Okay.
That way everybody asks the same question each time?
Sure.
Um, we have a total of nine candidates that every day, and we had thirteen original applicants for them withdrew. Um, so we have scheduled twenty minutes each for the interviews with seven questions. So people could budge their time to two to three minutes per response. All the candidates have the questions ahead of time. At the end of all the interviews, um, deliberation, we did double check with legal again because we don't have any significant cause for
Right.
closed deliberation where someone may be significantly embarrassed or wounded professionally too. And deliberation will take place in open and then voting. Um, and it works ironically similar to the House and that you do continuous rounds until one person exceeds
Yep.
at least four. Uh, well.
Can, uh, we ask some follow-up questions after somebody's done touching the seven? If there's something that one of us wants a follow-up question on, can you do that?
Um, typically, um, recommendation would be not to, they just give two questions, so it's the same for everybody.
Alright.
Uh, when I'd say if there was something that was really, um, it's probably better if you need a clarification within that specific question, something you don't understand or
Okay.
um, to bring up about more of the question.
Okay. Alright. Any questions by you guys? Cool. Okay. Um, alright, well then, I guess we'll, it's call up our first candidate, which is Kathy Kostak.
Yes, everyone?
Um, Kathy, I'm going to start, um, and so I'll be asking you your questions. Um. Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes, the notes you take are public. Um.
Yeah, the notes aren't public.
Oh, the notes aren't public.
The votes are public.
The votes are public.
So the most we don't turn, the voting, she keep her vote, the notes still get turned down.
The notes
And they get retained.
Okay.
In case there's ever a
Right.
one should write down the room.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead Kathy. Um, why do you want to be appointed to the school board and what are the contributions you can make to the leadership of the district?
Um, I've been a resident here in Alcorn for thirty years, more than thirty years. I have two adult children who have been participants and graduates of the Alcorn area school district. And, um, we're busy then. I'm busy now. We can all relate.
Um.
But this is important. And now is important. Um, I think it's, uh, an important step for me. It's important stuff for me as a, a member in our community, uh, to have a voice for our students. Um, I live in the backyard of Tibbetts and it's glorious that I hear the school bells ringing and kids laughing in the, in the, in the yard. And, um, I want that to continue and I think it's important, um, that we provide a, a solid, successful school experience for kids, uh, to hear that laughter, to hear that joy. Um, as a former educator, I, I love that in the classroom and I love that opportunity to see the lights turn on and have kids just really, um, be enriched by their learning and get it. And I wanna help be a part of that. Um, I want that commitment in the community. Um, I, as I just said, I am a former educator, it's been some time. Um, but I've got that perspective still, uh, that commitment that educators have, professionals have, you have, I possibly could have, uh, as a committed individual, uh, to the success of our students and the success of our schools. Um, I have a continuing, um, work experience in banking and in finance. And I think it's an interesting dovetail between the two of them, those experiences, those, that skill set and to bring that to, to Alcorn and into the school district here.
Okay, great. If we asked several people who knew you or who know you very well, the reasons why you would make a good school board member, what would they tell us?
I do just that. I contacted some friends and said, hey, I'm, I'm putting a hat in here.
Yeah.
Um, first off, tell me if you think I'm, I'm out of line for doing this. And I got resounding no, absolutely, this is a great idea. And then I posed this exact question and, um, the responses I got to them, um, I'm fair, I'm level-headed, I'm open-minded. Um, I work really well with other people. I'm, I'm willing to listen to other perspectives, take them into consideration. Um, I know that we have a goal, there's a mission statement right in front of us. So working together to achieve those goals are, are so very important. Um, I, I find solutions for things and they might feel a little out of the box, but sometimes you gotta think out of the box to, to come up with something. Um, one thing that I am learning in the last several years though, is that I need to take off my fix-it hat. I can't fix it all, not my job, sometimes. Sometimes it is, but I, I, I need to know my limitations and, and be willing to ask for help and process. Um, and, and one really, uh, heartwarming thing that somebody said to me is that I'm very uplifting. Um, I come to things with a very positive attitude and, um, and very encouraging.
Are there specific improvements or changes that you would like to see the board or administration consider? And if so, why?
Um, I think you've been at this a long time and I went through a few of the previous minutes and notes. Um, but I know that there have been a lot of building decisions and things that have taken place over the past years. Um, I, I think that the bottom line goal is that we wanna provide the best possible learning opportunities for all students. Um, we need to evaluate programs and policies and maybe take a second look at those sometimes as time changes, as things evolve. And, um, so to, to answer the question of specific improvements or changes, no, not right now. I don't think I'm in a place to make that kind of pronouncement. Um, but I do believe it's important that we take the time to evaluate, uh, the decisions that we've made, the programs that we've had, that we have in place. Um, we need to be mindful of the needs of our teachers and our professionals and, um, the other connections that we have in our schools and communities. Um, we need to be able to support those teachers and, and professionals and, um, be look, be willing to look hard at what works and what doesn't.
Um, what do you see as the most significant external threats to the success of our schools and students?
This was hard and, um, and found that I'm guilty of it and that is social media. If I had to give it one catchphrase, um, it's ease of access and the decreasing age of access. Um, I know more and more kids are, are getting cell phones and having access to other, um, means of social media and news. Um, it's a thief. It takes your time, it takes your attention, um, it disrupts interactions. And, um, it, it can have definitely positive aspects and negative aspects, but I do believe it's an interruption and we just need to be aware of that, we need to have it on our radar. Um, I don't know what's in place currently with regard to the school and its, its policies and procedures. Um, but it's something I think we need to be aware of and it's certainly something that, that hits us from the outside.
Sure. What do you think the school board should do to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain high-quality staff?
Clearly, we want the best. Um, we want the best for our students, we want the best of the teachers that are here, we want the best of the teachers that we're looking to, to attract. Um, and in order to do that, we need to be the best. We need to, um, stand up for what's right, we need to be supportive, we need to collaborate, we need to work together. Um, we need to provide opportunities for, I think, for, for teachers to, um, have some self-enrichment. Um, to, I mean, not only to, you know, come in with a, a bachelor's degree and maybe work on to getting a master's or so on and, and providing compensation for that and recognition for that, but just personal enrichment, having that mental break. Teaching is hard. It's hard work and I think it's important that we recognize that, um, and acknowledge that. And so, uh, to, to want the best, we need to be the best.
What do you see as the current strengths of the school district that the board should work to maintain going forward?
Um, a couple of things have caught my eye. Um, this was new to me, I didn't recognize this, the distinguished district. Obviously, that's something that's, that you guys worked hard to happen, make happen. I know that Tibbetts is a blue ribbon school. Um, I know that the Currie College Academy that's going on a gateway is, uh, an integral part of what's going on. Um, you've got a great graduation rate, um, one of the things I looked into. Where I, uh, depending on which report you read, we're either sixth or eighth in the state of Wisconsin in our school ranking. Those are good things, be proud of that. And, um, I think we need to continue to, to work towards those things and, and work towards those strengths. Um, I'll steal a line out of a movie, uh, and it's a little morphed at that and it's students go beyond the level of expectation. Um, we can do that, but it can also fall. So it's, we need to continue to build on the strengths that we have and, uh, and continue to encourage one another and, uh, and keep that rolling, keep that moving forward.
And then finally, how do you perceive the district's management of its finances? And if necessary, which areas of the school budget would you reduce first?
Again, this is a really difficult question. Um, you've been at this far longer than I have had the time to, to do a deep dive as to the, the decisions that have been made and, um, the complexities involved and all of that, so, um, I have to preface anything I say, but with, with that, um, we're, uh, we're a commitment to the community. I, I don't have kids in school now. And, and that was actually one of the questions that I was asked when I brought this to, to my friends and family and saying, hey, look, I'm, I'm interested in doing this. And they're like, well, why? You know, there's this tech, there's this line item on my textbook that, that gives me the reason why. Um, we have a responsibility to our community, to our taxpayers, to our parents and to our students. Um, our investment is in our kids right now and we need a good return on that investment. Um, so to say, you know, where would I make a budget cut? Where would I, I, I make a decision to reduce funding in a certain area over another? I need the bigger picture. Um, I can't make a simple answer to that. Um, I'm not privy to any discussions that we no doubt have had along the lines when you come to those budgets, as you do every year. Um, hard decisions need to be made and I'm willing to consider all options, look at different things, um, listen to one another and, and make a good solid decision.
Cut the school board salary?
There we go. Wait, there's salary again?
It's big savings.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, next up, we have Dan Waterdell. And we just wanna go to ask these questions. I think that goes smoother when one person asks.
Yep.
Well, thanks for having me, I appreciate you.
Uh, why do you wanna be appointed to the school board and what are the contributions you can make to leadership of the district?
Well, uh, as I said in my letter, I'm pretty young compared to the group, I look a little older than I am in my thirty-nine. So I got, uh, four young boys in the district, three in Tibbetts, so that's a scary thing to do. Um, I'm dairy farmer, so I'm actually involved in some boards and councils in the dairy district, which I've gotten used to these, I really enjoy. And, uh, I like being part of this, making decisions, uh, working with people. Uh, truthfully, it's, you know, I think I said in my letter, a lot of my, my grandfather, a lot of common word stuff, it's kind of a family type thing. I think it's a great way to serve the community if you're willing and able. Um, truthfully, I always thought about running for the school board at some point, not this early, but I thought this would be a really good opportunity. Maybe dip my toe in, if I got picked, I'd see what it's like and stuff like that. But, uh, I don't know, I just wanna be part of making good clever decisions and my kids are obviously young in the district and they'll be here for a long time. So I just thought it's a good opportunity and my wife said, I think you should try this, so that pushed me over the edge. Um, and as far as what qualities, uh, kinda like Kathy said, I feel like I'm level-headed and, um, I think I'm really good at listening. And I think a lot of times people just wanna be heard and know they've been heard in a lot of this stuff, so I think that's a good quality of our community.
Hey, if we had several people who know you very well, the reasons why you would like, why you would make a good school board member, what would they tell us?
Um, I'm level-headed, calm, uh, very cerebral. Uh, I carry no agenda, I, I really unbiased on pretty much everything and I was taking information and, uh, like, my wife told me, she's like, you're really calm and patient and you give good advice. So I just try to be very bipartisan and taking everybody's thoughts and stuff like that. I'm very calm and I don't get very anxious, so.
Are there any specific improvements or changes that you would like to see the board or administration consider?
Oh, I don't wanna copy everything Kathy said, but not, not necessarily, but I mean, it's, it's a very good district with a good reputation. Um, like you said, I'm not privy to a lot of discussions to that and I've probably been to like one school board meeting before to support something, I believe in. Um, no, I just, you gotta keep charting a good path forward and, um, I just, enough communication in the community and parents and teachers and keep it all right. But nothing off the top of my head that I'm, I'm pining for.
Uh, what do you see as the most significant external threats to the success of our schools and students?
Um, misinformation and, and which goes along with the social media thing, but misinformation leads to mistrust. Uh, I think sometimes you get parents that get hung up on a single item and that becomes their full force and what they're targeting. And I think we lose picture that what you guys do as a school board, there's a lot more that goes into it than just a single, single item. People get very, uh, passionate and driven by something and this could be environment of just what's going on in our world or rhetoric that we hear all the time. So it, it's that social media, it's the, just the mistrust and misinformation, which is sad.
What do you think the school board should do to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain high-quality staff?
It has to go, and I reached out to some teacher friends I have and, um, wonderful teachers, uh, also parents. And something, you know, I was like to myself, well, yeah, you could always pay them more, but that's not the easy answer. Um, I heard a couple of times, they describing words of jumping through hoops or insurance and stuff to achieve like their silver status or there's also these pro-growth points, which I understand other districts do as well. But I, I think they kinda felt like almost asking, not too much, but just asking a little more if it's necessary, so kind of a runaround. Uh, and they, mostly teachers are great and they probably put in more time than they need to and they spend their own money on supplies for kids and stuff like that. So I think maybe taking some of that stuff off their plate or making it just a little bit easier to bring their job in, is what I would say.
What do you see as the current strengths of the school district that the board should work to maintain going forward?
Well, again, this is, this Kathy said, it's a distinguished district, um, Tibbetts is a blue ribbon school, um, it's got a great reputation and it's got good staff. So I, I think we've just gotta keep that stuff going and, uh, just be as positive as possible, things like that.
Right, how do you perceive the district's management of its finances and if necessary, which areas of the school budget would you reduce first?
I think the school district does the best it can. Um, again, I, yeah, like Kathy does it, I'm not privy to all the discussions that go on, I know there's tough decisions. Um, you know, you'd have to look at everything, maybe every time, uh, and I'm not saying this always happens, but if a teacher asks for a salary increase, maybe they can't have it or there has to be some pay freezes or you have to look at maybe certain positions in administration and see if it's, it's worth, what we're getting and stuff. But, um, you know, I, obviously the last, um, referendum didn't pass, but maybe the timing was just wrong or it needs to be tweaked to ask for a lesser amount or, I think a lot of this stuff is very fluid and sometimes the timing is just wrong. So we gotta just find a way to make it palatable for everybody, 'cause in the end, everybody wants the district to do well. And, and that's what we need to keep succeeding and thrive, I think.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Uh, the question was, there are specific improvements or changes that you would like to see? Uh, you said you came to a board meeting for an issue that you supported?
Oh.
What was the issue?
It was back when they were considering adding, uh, a full-time day teacher for the middle school. Yeah, okay. And it, can I, can I add something to that? But I have my own prep right down. Um, I know it's hard to get substitute teachers, it's a sub shortage. Um, obviously, my connection is mostly with Tibbetts, 'cause that's where my kids have all been. And I know it's particularly hard to maybe get like elementary school subs. And obviously, in high school, middle school, those kids are more self-sufficient, you can kinda, they can give them a worksheet or it's easier to deal with them. Uh, maybe on the elementary level, we, 'cause they, and I've sat and reading to some kindergarten classes when there's a sub, I mean, they're herding cats all day. So it's hard, that's a harder job, maybe we have to find a way to pay them a little bit more for the day or incentivize, you know, you work so many days, you get this much more. But I know it's hard to, I mean, I watch her for forty-five minutes and I, that'd be tough. So I, I think there's little things like that, that, 'cause if you, if you go to Tibbetts, sometimes, you know, the sub in for a special, well, the fourth grade class, that gets pulled to that class and so you lose priority. I think those little kids need as much guidance during the day as possible, so give a lot of credit to them. That's just an idea that I have.
Thank you very much, Dan.
I appreciate it.
Great, next one is Brenda Johansson. Running ahead of step.
That's a privilege.
Right?
I was just saying, there was no floor session afterwards, so, thanks, Heather. If you didn't put in for just that.
Yeah.
You get just mad and sleep late.
Because he said you took a vote while I wasn't here last time, it was all my point. Oh, great. Okay, go ahead, Heather.
Hi, Brenda. Why do you want to be appointed to the school board and what are the contributions you can make to leadership of the district?
Um, I think one of the most important things that the school board provides is that we can guiding policy and vision that the rest of the district can follow. Obviously, financial management is a crucial part, but, um, I have a previous career as an educator and I know that one of the things that we looked to school board members for was just an idea of where are we going? What is important to this district and what do we wanna do? As a member of the school board, I think that my specialty, my, the strength that I would bring to the table is I have a lot of history analyzing policy, writing policy and revising policy. Um, I work at E W Lightwater now, I serve on several committees that analyze and craft policy, employment relations for personnel rules. Um, as a part of my job, I work on grant management and that includes reading state policy, working with state lawmakers and state professional, um, staff members to craft programs that are going to meet state standards, that have guidelines in place, that meet goals. And it can be tricky, but one of the things I bring to the table is an ability to poke holes in every policy and find the exceptions before they happen. 'Cause I think a good, well-crafted policy and mission statement can really save everyone a lot of time in the end.
If I'm gonna say, um, never saw the gym.
These floors are noisy.
Alright, if we asked several people who know you very well, the reason why you would make a good school board member, what would they tell us?
Uh, well, I hope that they would tell you that I have a heart of service for this community. Um, I joined the community when I first became a teacher and moved here just as a result of getting a job and I have grown to love this community. Um, I served as a foster parent for a number of years, so I've had kids in almost every school in the district. And that really gave me the opportunity to work with school district staff members and community members in a variety of ways. And as my own child is going through Tibbetts in the middle school and is now at the high school, I've also been, um, really involved in PTA, PTO, now the Booster Club. I love volunteering, I'm not a super social person, it's the way that I get my social, um, I don't know, time out there and I really find value in feeling like I have contributed something to the community.
You said that you, um, work PTA, PTO and Booster?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, are there specific improvements or changes you would like to see the board or administration consider and if so, why?
Um, the first thing that sprang to mind, and this is just a result of attending a lot of meetings recently, is I improve the agenda for school board meetings and making sure that people that are coming to a presentation or to give a presentation have a goal and perhaps a set time. That's, again, I work in higher ed and I spend a lot of time doing my elevator pitches and coming to a meeting where I know that I have three minutes to get my message across. And I don't think any of our school district staff members should be limited to three minutes. But I do think it's important that they know what we're looking for as a school board and what their goal is and we should know that too.
What seems to be the most significant external threat to the success of our school and our students?
I think for our students, the, the ongoing rise of social media and ongoing changes in our society can be seen as a threat because there are constantly influences in all of our children's lives that we as a community, as parents and school members can't control. But we do have to have some say in the outcome and what happens next, what are the consequences? Or how do we support students as they go through whatever is happening? Um, I also think that there are, in this very divided political day and age, there are a lot of outside groups that have a lot of interest in how an individual school district runs its business and with their own agendas. And I think that it's really important that a school or a setting or district to really run with the goal to serve its own community and bring the values of the community members to that, to those decisions, but also make sure that we're not allowing ourselves to be influenced by outside groups with their own agendas or their own messages to us.
Okay.
What do you think the school board should do to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain high-quality staff?
Well, I think Alcorn does a great job attracting and retaining. I think the number of Alcorn alumni that are staff here is something that the district should be proud of 'cause that speaks very highly to a district that people would leave and then come back. Um, I think having a strong, reliable set of leadership, knowing that I think having a strong, reliable set of leadership, knowing that we aren't a district that undergoes constant turnover, knowing that we're a district that has a solid budget and has a solid financial history. Those are things that can attract staff, that make people believe that there's, they don't have to worry, if I get hired this year, will I have a job next year? I think the low turnover and money of our buildings speaks to the fact that we do a fantastic job in that. I also think that our staff need to feel supported. I heard the last candidate talk about there are a lot of individual decisions that affect how staff members feel supported. Obviously, everybody deserves a pay raise. That would be amazing. And if we get a bunch of money, that'd be great. But there are a lot of ways that you can make staff feel appreciated. The COVID lead policy that you guys just renewed, I think that's a great example of something with a very small financial impact to the district that has a huge feeling of safety and reliability for staff. Knowing that the district and the school board values their time and that that safety that is there for a staff member, that's huge. I think continuing to offer professional development opportunities, continuing to offer the amazing mentorship and leadership that we have district-level staff that can offer, those things also attract staff members. There are a lot of districts that have first-year staff that come in because they can't get another job and then they spend their first year getting experience and looking for a different job. I don't think Elkhorn has that problem. And I think the most important thing is to make sure that we continue to not have that problem, that we continue to be an attractive place to work and learn.
What do you see as the current strengths of the district and that, I'm sorry. What do you see as the current strengths of the school district that the board should work to maintain going forward?
I think one of our main strengths that I don't think the board can affect anyway is our location. Honestly, in the heart of the county with our county buildings right here, with Gateway right here, with E W Whitewater twenty minutes away. Those are an amazing, you know, connection and ability to tap into some resources that many school districts around the state have access to. Having our school district to be within walking distance of downtown businesses gives us the opportunity to partner with businesses in a way that a lot of other districts just can't do. And we're really lucky to have that. I also think that our community is growing. We have a lot of community investment, a lot of investment in our community. We have a tight housing market right now, which I think has affected our enrollment. But I think that as soon as new housing is added, we're going to see an increase in enrollment. And that speaks to a strength in our community that, again, not every rural community in Wisconsin has as a, you know, has any control over. I also think that the district has done a great job in setting up district-wide partnerships and leadership teams that really help each just, each school, each building within those districts to thrive on its own, but still provide that kind of equal set of education. There's no child at Tibbetts who's learning something that's not also happening at Westside, that's not also happening at Jackson. And again, that's not something you can say about every district, especially a district our size.
How do you perceive the district's management of its finances and if necessary, which areas of the school budget would you reduce first?
I think our district has done a great job and I think that's credit to Jason and to the leadership beforehand. Our district has been really conservative in a financial picture that's been tough for a long time. And I really appreciated the way that the superintendent, the budget manager, or the district business manager do a great job of not just carefully stewarding those resources, but also projecting and making sure that those projections are optimistic. I really appreciate that every time I've ever heard any of them give a presentation, a PTO meeting or anything, it includes, this is our best-case scenario, but this is also our worst-case scenario and a message that we're ready for both. I think that's one of the things that gets school boards or school districts in trouble is hoping for the best and not also planning for, what are we going to do if that housing development doesn't come in? What are we going to do if the, you know, furnace in that building does catch on fire? How are we going to solve that problem? And I think that's something that our district has always done a great job at. And sometimes enrollment numbers just don't catch up with us in time. I think on the school board, my role would not be to say, I think we spend too much in this broad category. Let's cut X percent. I don't think that's a good way to manage a school board budget. I believe that there are, there's a ton of work that goes into the presentations of these budgets. There's a ton of work that goes into what goes into each number. And I think the only way to responsibly make those financial adjustments is to really dig into what is a savings that we can do that still maintains the quality of our education at every level. I think there's things like shared service contracts, non-capital investments that we can always look at, but our goal and our position as a school board is to maintain the quality of that education. Because as soon as we start cutting something that affects that, we start ourselves on a downhill slide that isn't easy to stop because then people perceive that the district is not moving forward and growing. So I think I would start with the budgets that are available to me as a community member are not as detailed as what's available to the school board. I love digging into those members. That's part of what I do as a research and data manager at work. And really identifying what's changed over the years. Where has the spending gone up, gone down? Why has it gone down? And of course, what do the people that are on the ground recognize? Because I think the people in the buildings doing the work have the best view, even though that's not from the heart, so you get to collect from a higher level.
Is it better to ask the questions after the, before going on to the next question or should we wait to the end to ask the question?
Yeah.
At the end?
Yeah.
Okay. We got two hours. So I have a, I have a question for you. On number four, and this is because it's a, it's a big community thing that's happened. I've gotten questions about it in public. Most significant external threats, and I agree with you. When you said outside groups having outside interest, we need to serve our own community. You brought that up to us. Is there something specific that you would need to deal with? Is there a current issue that you know of that you would suggest or want to deal with?
Well, I think the issue that came to the head at the annual meeting where you had a huge part of attendance on both sides of the issue of the gender transition plans.
Yeah.
I think that there are outside groups in, you know, the entire political sphere with extremely radical views on both sides. I have, I have an opinion, but I think as a school board member, that's not my job to bring in my personal view to that. My job is to make sure that we're doing something that falls in line with our mission and that helps us serve our children that are in this district. And I think it's really important to identify the outside groups and their agendas because I don't think that you can avoid falling in line with those agendas if you can't identify them. But also maintaining your neutrality and your ability to serve every stakeholder in the community is crucial, as far as I'm concerned, in any leadership position in the district.
Did you speak at the meeting?
I might have noticed that I was shaking and like trembling.
Nothing to do.
I remember my paper just kind of like in the microphone. I might have been a teacher, but when it comes to standing up in front of my peers, I still, still get that, those nerves.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll let Jody know just to let the candidates towards the end know that we're running a little ahead of that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
Do we want to? Do you want to just go to the next one? And I apologize. Are you Jeff?
I am, yes.
Let me let, yeah, then we, then Bell's here too before anyone. So we can keep on track.
First of all, thank you for your service.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'd be Julie to that.
I have a son currently deployed in the Navy.
It is an honor to serve and I, I'll get to do it for about ten more months, so.
That's what threw me out because I wasn't certain with the.
Yeah, I have a religious exemption to have a beard and that's the one question I get all the time. You must be retired. No, not yet. Very, very close. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry that it was Navy, not something like the Marine Corps.
But you know what it is.
Um, I guess, so why do you want to be appointed to the school board and what are the contributions you can make to the leadership of the district?
All right. So first off, my main reason for wanting to do this is to give to the community. I've only lived here for two years, but Elkhorn has already made me and my family deal like, like we live in, we've been living here for years. We plan to settle here. We're going to retire next year. Zero plans. I'm moving out of the neighborhood because we love where we live. I believe I can bring a background of leadership and non-traditional education expertise, experience that I've accumulated over a twenty-two-year career in the Navy. Last nine, or nine of those twenty-two years, I've been an educator for the government. I've been an instructor for navigation training, both ship and shore. I know that's a huge difference from what's being taught here in the schools. I know it's not the same. And I know it's a whole different realm that I'm about to try to jump into here, but I honestly do think that I have a point of view and a passion for learning. I have two daughters here, one at Jackson and one at the middle school. They love it. They have loved every moment of being here, working with their teachers. And unfortunately, I haven't been able to make all the events, you know, PTO meetings. My schedule doesn't allow, but my wife has. She's been to the PTO meetings. She volunteers whenever she can. She loves this district and so do I. So I just want to be a part of it. I want to see if I can help, you know, make things better or worse because like you said, I do work for the government and I'm known for doing both, but hopefully make things better.
Thank you. We have several people who knew you very well. The reasons why you would make a good school board member, what would they tell us?
They'd tell you that I'm an open and honest person, passionate, sometimes to a fault. But I have the ability to listen to a situation and to provide unique viewpoints. I have a lot of possible solutions that might not be readily apparent to a lot of other people just based off of my experiences in life. They'd also tell you that I'm dedicated to the things that I'm involved in. Once I begin to work on or for something, I will give a hundred percent of my effort, which is what I'm hoping to do here on this board.
Are there specific improvements or changes you would like to see the board or administration consider? If so, why?
To be honest, right now, I can't give a good answer on that. Through the minutes over the last year since I thought about this process, they all seem very straightforward, but I know it's not as simple as just attending the board meetings. There's a lot of things that go on outside of this room that I'm sure you've all had to deal with that I don't have that experience for. So at this time, no, I don't. I'm a quick learner. I hope to be able to provide that, you know, some experience in that situation. But I'll keep doing my research and if I'm appointed a member of this board, I'll, I'll do my very best.
Thank you. What do you see as the most significant external threats to the success of the schools and students?
All right, number four in here, it's social media. As we looked here, social media is one of the biggest influences, especially in my teenage daughter. And what comes along with that is bullying. The influence of bullying that comes to social media is drastically on the rise, not just from the students, but also from the adults. I've had to deal with this situation myself of a student bullying my child where the parents got involved, that I had to take it to the school, to the middle school principal, and it was dealt with professionally and with zero complaints from me and my wife. Everything was handled quickly. But I know that's a thing that's growing. Like, like somebody said earlier, social media accounts are popping up six, seven, eight, nine, ten-year-olds. I mean, children who shouldn't be exposed to these kind of things are already on social media and it has positive influences. It gives them a lot of resources to, you know, deal with things that are going on with their life and to find things to help them with their studies. But there's also a negative to it that unfortunately is ever-present in their lives. And I think that's why social media is probably the biggest negative right now.
What do you think the school board should do to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain high-quality staff?
I believe it's the duty of the board to do their best to ensure fair and competitive compensation for those who work for the school district. This compensation can come in many forms from wages, salary to healthcare, education and other benefits. That will help to recruit the best and the brightest to begin working here and remain with the district for years to come. We must openly and vigorously pursue the next generation of educators, coaches, facility members, and even bus drivers, which is currently a thorn in the side of many parents, especially in my area, that want to work with the district. By striving to ensure these positions are filled, we can also work towards retention by ensuring the staff does not get burned out from having to fill fill into vacant positions that they may not have the time or resources to fill.
What do you see as the current strengths of the school district that the school board should work to maintain going forward?
So I'm going to go to the four Rs. First, creating a relationship and responsiveness. The relationship with the students and the instructor or the teachers here is fantastic. I get emails every week from my, my children's teachers primarily in the elementary school, but also from the teachers in the middle school. I get grade updates. I get told whenever something positive or negative happens in the, in the school district. You know, unfortunately, the passing of a teacher this last couple of weeks, I mean, the response was amazing and it was quick. Situations happened on the bus. I get an email about it. I know about it. Something coming up that may not even impact my child, I get notified on it. So that responsiveness is, I mean, that relationship building and the responsiveness that comes along with it definitely make me feel like everything in this district is going in a positive direction. And the next one is relevance. Maintaining education standards can be difficult for the needs, because needs of the students is always changing. By ensuring that our curriculum is of instruction, is updated, it follows real-life needs and challenges, we can ensure that the children of the district are ready to make, ready and can take on the real-world challenges that they'll have once they graduate.
So you said, I apologize, you said four Rs and I only counted three on that one.
Yeah, so I only had the, the three that were, yeah, those were the three that I was referencing. The fourth one, I didn't have anything to go with.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, rigor actually didn't really tie anything to directly, but those three right there, I've got firsthand experience with.
How do you perceive the district's management of its finances and if necessary, which areas of school budget, budget would you reduce first?
Once again, I don't have enough information to speak intelligently on this topic. I looked through the last three years of budgets that were provided on the school board and it was a jumble of numbers. I'm, I'm very, I have had experience dealing with budgets on a large scale in my time in the military, dealing with worship, training budgets and things along those lines. But unfortunately, I don't know the education budgets that you are dealing with now. But on that note, I'm still a quick learner. I would love to learn more about the process, the procedure, find out where those budgets are going. And like I said, I don't want to say I'm going to say we should cut something here or add something there without understanding what the, the response would be. If we cut something from here or add something to one side, we're going to have to take it from somewhere else. And as a, you know, not knowledgeable enough member right now, I couldn't adequately speak to where that would be. I don't, I don't want to make those kinds of changes without knowing what's going on.
So one of the questions, so change all of this, but so you're getting out of the military in ten months.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what do you plan on doing at that point?
So at that point, I'm going to be an online curriculum developer contractor for the US government. So I'll be building computer-based training for all branches of the DOD. So luckily it'll be work from home, so it saves me a two-hour transit time to and from the base down in Great Lakes. Because my wife picked this house while COVID was going on. I did not get the chance to fly out here and look at it. It's a beautiful house. It was a beautiful neighborhood, but I did not map quest that drive. We have large trucks. It's killing me. So I will definitely enjoy working from home.
You give what you wish for and work it from home though.
Oh, I know. I'm already starting to set up the office and tell the kid where they can, when they can and cannot come to the office. So. So I'll miss the motorcycle rides and work in the summer though, that's for sure.
Thank you very much.
All right. Sorry for the short, distinct, distinct answers. That's a very government. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
All right, Bill. We'll say, well, Bill's coming up. My son was all excited when he was getting sent down to Columbia. He's in the army to keep the bra, the facial hair.
Yes.
Then he got down there and it's too hot.
The biggest gripe of the military is everybody wants a beer, but nobody can have one. The biggest gripe of the military is everybody wants a beer, but nobody can have one. At last they find the rules.
Good afternoon, sir. Okay. First question, uh, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you can make to the leadership of the districts?
Um, I think you have all the, the things in resume. I told you a little bit about my experiences. Um, I've been in the district for over 25 years. Um, currently have one eighth grade grandchild and had a senior graduated last year from high school. So worked with, uh, some of those things that are going on here and keep track and have over the years. Um, I've, my experience in education is, has been close to 40 years. I've worked at all different levels, uh, very lower elementary and through administration. And I've done everything from curriculum to finance to you name it. And I guess that's one of the reasons why at this point I've kind of kept track of what's going on in the district and it's moving ahead and moving ahead. And then the last couple of years, it, it looks like we're in for some little tougher times as far as finance and things like that. And I just felt that this was a good time that I can lend some skills and expertise to some of the decisions that have to be made. Um, I guess I, I believe that I have skills to serve districts, students in the districts from day one. I come in, I work with you and, and be ready with that. Obviously my priority is and always has been best possible education for student, students in the district. Um, in this case, it's the Elkhorn area school district. And I just have a, a small kind of a code that I work with. Every positive decision that we have today is going to have a positive effect on the community tomorrow. It goes from right here to out there and we have to be very cognizant of that. And we have to nurture that because that ultimately keeps everything going. So that's kind of my reason of, of getting into this at this time.
Uh, if we ask several people who know you very well, the reasons why you would make a good school board member, what would they tell us?
Well, I think first of all, it's good board members have the ability to work cooperative with others. And also they have to be able to collaborate to reach positive results. Um, in addition to those qualities, I think others will tell you that first, I'm a good listener. I'm a strategic thinker and I'm a person that makes decisions that are done the best outcomes for students. And that's where I've always set my priorities. There's a lot of other folks involved in, in a community and a school district, but that's got to be the focus. If you take your eye off of that, then you're not going in the direction you should, in my opinion.
Uh, are there specific improvements or changes that you would like to see the board or administration consider? And if so, why?
I think you have to be very careful. Whenever you're looking at things like improvements, you have to study, you have to gain your, your facts, your information, specific proposals. You have to have not only that facts and things are there, you got to get input from all the folks that you're going to be involving with that decision. And I know that's hard sometimes. It does take time, but you got to work your way back because obviously the whole outcome and what goes from there is going to be affected by the decision you make. You can make the decision, but it doesn't mean that that's going to happen unless you have all those other things in place.
Uh, what do you see as the most significant external threats to the success of our schools and students?
Um, I try to look at, at that and we have a lot of negatives out there and I'm not a negative person. I'm Clay over on the other side. I've got three things, positive thoughts, positive actions, positive results. That's what has to happen. So you have to focus on those things, even though those other things are out there, you have to be aware of them. And you have to be ready to move ahead on them. But I, I see all of this as instead of a threat, it's a challenge to continue the current success that we have here. You have to keep going on what you have and how you keep making it better. And all those other things find their place if you're strong and can do that. Um, I try to picture a school district as a pyramid. At the very top are our students. They're always growing. They're always maturing. And as we work our way down, we have teachers and staff that support those students each and every day. And we have administrators that ensure the resources, uh, are there so that people above them can function both safely and effectively. Then you kind of go down a little farther on that pyramid. That's all your parents and community members. They provide the positive environment for schools to function then. And the school board, not last but least, but ends up being at the bottom. But they, it's very important. They're the foundation of the whole thing. And they have provide the strength and encouragement to all those things above. They're small in number, but the things you do are very, uh, serious and, and they have consequences. So that's kind of how I look at that. The board needs to have policies that are clear and easy to manage for those that have to do that, as well as having the financial means to carry out all those policies. And there's where things cross. It gets very difficult to have to do that all the time, but that's, that are in this, the job. I think the challenge then is to make sure that the parents and community members are aware of the positive outcomes that schools have for both the students and the community. A lot of things go on and it's just, just every day. It's the same. We start in September, we end in whatever it is. It goes on, but there are certain things that come along the way that people need to know about. If they can see, you know, you put out the little thing that comes in the mail and I don't know how many people actually take them out of the post office. If they get it to post office, how many end up in the circular, how many people go through there? And that is a very serious challenge. How do you get that information to the folks to say, this is what we're doing? And in some cases it's tooting your own horn, but a lot of it is just logistics. So where are all of our kids and how are they doing and how are we being successful? And I think that as long as, along with the rest of the community that doesn't have kids in school, they need to know those things. And it's very hard to do that, but you have to keep working at that. And then finally you have to let them know that the school district does have some financial needs. And if you want to maintain what we're doing today at this high level, this is what we need and how we need to do it. So I think that's, that's kind of where I see that, um, district can move ahead and, and, you know, get beyond things and focus on the mission of what we have.
What do you think the school board should do to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain a high-quality staff?
Yeah. I think the, the best way that you retain the high-quality staff is to hire high-quality administrators. These are the folks who have to have the knowledge and skills and they have to be able to work with teachers and support staff at all levels, whether they're a first-year person, whether they're a 20-year person. They have to work, be able to work with all of them and they have to gather input from those high-quality staff members because that's essential for finding that high level of service to students. And I think it kind of, sometimes we forget about it and we look and say, well, who are all these high-quality people we have? Well, we've got somebody that's been doing this for 10 or 20 years and they're doing this and that. And I think we fail to realize that part of it is, it's like students, we take them from down here, pre-kindergarten and they're growing, growing, growing. By the time you get to high school, they still got to grow some before they get out and then they're on their own. The same is with your staff. They have to grow as they go on. Um, I've hired and worked with a lot of beginning teachers and social staff people and they come in and they kind of get in there, what do I have to do? They get in there, check the boxes, do their job and they do a very good job, but it takes time for them. And they have to be able to grow. And I found a lot of folks that when I hired them, I thought they were good candidates. And as they went along, I saw, yeah, they're doing a really good job, but I needed to talk with them and give them opportunities and say, here's how you can do something else. What would you like to do? And to try to build those people into your leaders at all levels. And they don't have to be a 20-year teacher. They can be a five or a six-year teacher. They have those leadership qualities and now they've got a chance to develop them. So that's, I think that's how you retain those people by having administrators that do that for you. And then gradually those people start picking up. They work with other people and pretty soon you go along. And as people go along and work with that, they stick around the left. That I just found that out.
What do you see as the current strengths of the school district and the board's work to maintain going forward?
I think if I, if I've looked at it over the years, um, Elkhorn has provided high-quality, forward-thinking, learning opportunities for their students. And I think that's one of the best things you can do. You've got to be toward the cutting edge. You don't have to be over the edge and just say, well, we're going to switch everything around and do all this because it looks good and somebody thought it was a good idea. You find out isn't, but you've got to be moving that direction all the time, keeping on top of things and keeping those opportunities there for students. Um, supporting those in the classroom, uh, your, your teaching staff and your support staff, uh, that ensures the success of it. And then by administratively providing the resources for staff, that creates your long, great, long-range growth opportunity. You've got to keep bringing it out. You got to keep bringing it out. And that's, um, that's what I think the district has done. And that's what I'd like to see it continue to.
How do you perceive the district's management of its finances and if necessary, which areas of the school budget would you reduce first?
Well, historically, the school district has been a long-time conservative financial approach. That's the way it's been. A lot of districts in Long Island, I've worked in districts that are doing the same thing, but at the same time, you have to provide learning opportunities that equal or exceed other districts that spend more. Elkhorn does that. And so you take what you have and say, here's what we got. What can we make out of it? And you find ways to make more and more out of it, even though sometimes there's less there. And that's a big challenge and that's what you hire all your folks to do is how do we get more out of what we have? And sometimes that, uh, comes at a crossroads, uh, revenues fall short of, uh, the expenditures. And at that time, which is not just that time, but you need to review everything you do. Um, you start looking down into smaller and smaller categories and have people look at it. You talk to classroom teachers and, you know, get all the fifth grade teachers together and say, how can we do this better? What do you have that we can do better? Well, we'd like to have this. We'd like to have that. Yeah. Okay. Dollar sign, dollar sign. You put all that out. Let's take some of those off the table. What other things can be done? And those folks will come up with answers to your question and then say, well, we could do this, this way. And we could be more efficient. We could do whatever. Those things help all along the line. They don't necessarily give you more money, but they help to make a better, um, uh, success that you have. Um, again, you have to look at programs. You've got a lot of wonderful programs, but you still have to evaluate those programs and say, they've been very successful, but how much does it cost for what we get out of it? You know, can we maintain that? Can we maintain this with a little less gear there? What can we do better? Cause when you put all those little things together, it helps you with your big issue. So I guess that's kind of how I see, you know, what's going on. If reductions have to be made, you got to remember that typically reductions very often become permanent. Once something goes away, it doesn't come back around because it went away for a reason. And I think you have to give consideration your long-term consequences when you're making reductions to solve short-term concerns. So when you're making reductions, say, oh, we got to do this in the next two years, this is going to happen. Then you guys say, okay, what's it going to be like in 15 or 20 years? What is that going to do to what you have that's very successful? So I think in a nutshell, that's kind of how I look at that.
Great.
Questions?
Awesome. Thank you very much, Bill.
Chris, why are you?
Nobody wants to be here at seven tonight, Greg.
All right.
All right, Chris, welcome. Uh, first question, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you can make to the leadership of the district?
Sure. Uh, just to give you a little bit of the background, um, other than my faith and my family, education is the passion of mine. Um, even ranks higher above than the Packers. So my wife might be surprised at that, but passion is one of the big reasons why I'm interested in education. Uh, I grew up in a home where my mom is, was and is still a public educator. That's something that I grew up with, understanding all of that. I married a public educator. My wife is a teacher in the district. Um, and I went into public education myself. I pursued a career in school counseling as I recognize that the, the essence of education being the foundation and the building blocks of any community, especially for a small town. Um, that's something that's really important and something that, uh, I've always believed was essential for students. I have a love watching students grow and learn. Why I went into the education sector. Um, I'm currently not in K-12, but I was part of that. I started actually at Tivitz. I did a long-term sub uh, back in 2017. Then I went to move on to a high school in a neighboring school district. Uh, and worked as a school counselor there for five years before going to higher education. So the passion is why I'm here. Um, I feel like, uh, the experience that I have in a school setting can be of benefits. It's understanding, um, that perspective. And obviously I want to, to be of service to the community on this school district.
Thank you. Number two, if asked, if we asked several people who knew you very well, the reasons why you would make a good, good school board member, what would they tell us?
So they would start with that passion. I can go for hours. I know you don't want to be here to pass seven, but I can go for hours talking about education. So they would definitely highlight that aspect. I have a great attention to detail. When I was working in the school, uh, my team would always ask me, oh, what happened at the school board meeting? Cause they knew that I was watching. They knew that I would pay attention to those things. Um, they'd ask me those types of questions just to see, uh, where, what was going on. I knew that, uh, I was trained as a counselor, so I've had many years of practicing with listening skills. Uh, as simple as that might sound, it is a skill that can be practiced, honed and used. So they would say that, uh, listening to people would be part of that role. And I seem to understand because of watching a little school board meetings, some of the workings of how the school district does in a, the macro picture. Um, one of those examples would be, uh, during the referendum last spring, uh, we have a Facebook page for our neighborhood and there were some questions about why does the school board, why does the school district need this referendum? Why do they need more money? They're confused. They're frustrated. I, I jumped in. I felt like I was able to answer people's questions in a calm and clear manner with a non-partisan uh, viewpoint on it, just trying to give the facts. So I feel like that's a great example and what people might highlight when it comes to why I would want to be on the school.
Thank you. On three, are there specific improvements or changes that you'd like to see the board or administration consider? And if so, why?
I don't have an agenda. I plan to come and serve. Um, there's nothing that I specifically feel like I need to come and upturn the apple cart for. I believe the school district has done, uh, great things historically. The only thing that I could truly find within published data that the school district could improve on is I saw that the, the test scores for our Hispanic and ESL students were, were going down as far as the last published data. So in the terms of trying to serve all students to be successful, that would be an area that I feel like could be improved on.
Uh, four, what do you see as the most significant external threats to the success of our schools and students?
The schools itself is misinformation. Um, I, I hope I never have to hear the word litter box at a school board meeting again. Um, that's, uh, clearly the rumor mill gets spinning and going and people don't necessarily understand. They just hear something, they run with it. When I was working in our high school, our secretary, she was, uh, out for a social evening and somebody was saying, all the schools are so awful. They don't even do the pledge of allegiance anymore. And she's like, yes, they do. They do it right from my desk. So in each community misinformation, a misunderstanding, trying to, uh, I don't know what the fascination is with, uh, demonizing schools. Frankly, I feel like with the importance of teachers and education nowadays, we should be propping them up and giving them support. Um, and if you have, if you hear something you don't like or you don't understand, please ask questions. The misinformation of not being able to ask questions, I feel like as a society, maybe we've forgotten how to do that. But, uh, misinformation definitely is what's the biggest threat to schools, uh, just because you're going to get attacked for things that are not true. Uh, when it comes to academics, I feel like the artificial intelligence and AI is the biggest attack on academics because of the integrity of what work can be done and what can be proven. And as for students, it's a, a bunch of different barriers. Coming from a school counseling background, I understand that there's a lot of barriers. And in psychology, they talk about a hierarchy of needs. And if the hierarchy of needs are not being met, students can't learn. So that includes things like food, safety, clothing. These are all things that the school district has increasingly provided over the course of the time through the 20th century and into the 21st century. So that external So that external factors that can get in the way, you can't focus. If you're in a classroom where you don't feel safe or where you don't, where you're hungry, that's where you can't learn. So that's one of those biggest, as you see an increase in students who are on free and reduced lunch, you're seeing that that can be an increasingly threat, just being able to eat and being able to focus on your classes is one of those bigger threats.
Thank you. Five, what do you think the school board should do to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain high-quality staff?
For attracting staff, K-12, there's a lot of conversations. Everybody talks to everybody. Everybody seems to know somebody in some district. So the reputation is the most important thing when you're trying to attract staff. You can see districts as far as what they put out there, but people are going to know each other. They're going to ask, they're going to talk to people, they're going to reach out to other people. If you have that reputation of being a school district, of a, of a district that can support your staff, of a high achieving school district, that's the best way to attract your staff. Now, once they're here, to keep them from leaving, it's usually coming down to administrators. If you like your administrator, if you can work with your administrator, if you can, if you have the flexibility to do things in your classroom that you feel is best for students, a lot of that goes into state. Because you can find a situation that you like, you can find that school district's selling greats, you show up, you're like, well, that's not as advertised. You're going to find a different spot. So retaining them doesn't necessarily have to come into the form of, of money. It doesn't have to be in the form of compensation in that regards. I can tell you, being in public education, it's not always about the money. Most people go into education because they want to help students. So if you can show to them that they matter, not just by telling them, but in your actions as a board and as administration, that's how people are going to stay. Because they're going to feel appreciated, they're going to feel like they make a difference. And that's realistically why they went into this field. Educators want to make a difference. They want to help students grow. And that's how you keep them here. If there's anything that you can do to allow them to teach, take some of the, the burden or offloading some of these extra duties that they might need to do. You might see things on, on social media that says, I like teaching. I don't always like being a teacher. And that's how you keep people here.
Thank you. Six, what do you see as the current strengths of the school district that the board should work to maintain going forward?
Being a school counselor, trained in a school counselor, I love the fact that for your career exploration, your course offerings, your program offerings, it is so difficult to be a high school nowadays and trying to meet the college and career readiness goals of every student that you have. That's super difficult. There's so many different career pathways and Elkhorn is doing that. They're being successful with it. You can see in the data that when it comes to advanced courses, dual enrollment, industry credentials, work-based learning, Elkhorn is performing at least twice the rate of, of the state average. So that's something that Elkhorn should be proud of, that you're offering things that get students into their potential career pathways. It helps them feel prepared when they leave. And that's something that really should be kept. The graduation rate is ninety-nine percent. I mean, how fantastic is that? True, that shows that in ways that you are serving all students. Even in achievement scores, you can see that the students on achievement scores are achieving higher than state averages. Those are all things that the district is doing well.
Thank you. Seven, how do you perceive the district's management of its finances? And if necessary, which areas of the school budget would you reduce first?
So as I said before, my wife works in the district, so I've seen lots of decisions over the time that shows that the district is conscientious of trying to make decisions. And O'Jason and Bill works really hard on making the important decisions, walking that fine line of what, where money should go. Although my wife's a music teacher, it was sad to see Spivoda and Simonson's positions not get replaced. That's a priority based on, on numbers, right? So I've seen the changes in healthcare, health insurance. The district has made changes to try and make cost savings. Absorbing positions that, that could be absorbed. Every time I feel like I ask a question like, well, how, how did the district afford that? I feel like the answer is always, well, somebody wrote a grant. So finding grant money has definitely been a, a large proponent of how some of these programs get started, get funded. The district is very conscientious of how they spend their money and understanding how state funding and everything comes into play and how that makes a difficult decision. Deciding on what to cut first, obviously a difficult decision. What I've seen as far as budget cuts for other things in the past, in my experience, you absolutely want to avoid anything student-facing, anything that's going to affect the student experience, especially in the age of open enrollments, when students can choose what district they want to go to. When you start cutting opportunities for them, whether that's programs, courses, whatever that, however that's affected, that's when you're going to notice that you'll see open enrollment numbers start changing. Now, Elkhorn's got a great open enrollment numbers at the moment. So you don't want to see that changed. I would say avoid anything that's with student-facing.
Anybody have a follow-up?
I do have one. Excuse me, you said that you were working originally for Elkhorn, correct?
I did a long-term sub position, yep, for Tibbetts.
What made you decide to go outside the district rather than come work for the district?
A full-time position. It was a, it was a long-term sub, so it was only temporary. In full disclosure, I didn't buy her position in the district. I won't name the administrator who passed me over, but I did find a different career pathway then after going to a high school, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very close to you. I know, but I, I always participate in deliberations.
There you go. So I was just short, I guess.
Thank you very much.
All right. Carlos, go to Tina next. All right, Carlos.
Good, how are you?
Good.
A little, little nervous. Using this as a, as a reference.
I'm going to be asking you the questions tonight. So why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you can make to the leadership of the district?
So I, I believe that I can provide a fresh perspective as well as diverse viewpoints. I believe that these are just important characteristics in regards to advocating for the community students as well as the administration. You know, showing, showing the administration how committed I can, I can be and will be is, is, is for me is, is very important as well as working with other people such as yourselves in a very positive way. Although it may not show now, I'm actually very good at communication. My nerves are a little rattled. But I'm also courteous of, of, of other people's, you know, I'm just courteous of other people and their viewpoints and what they believe. I believe, you know, identifying that is critical to making strong decisions for not only the district but the community.
Okay, great. If we asked several people who know you very well, the reasons why you would make a good school board member, what would they tell us?
So I believe that I'm a very critical thinker, right? And I like to make decisions based off of facts and data. I'm also a great listener and I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm very methodical and I also live by the notion of like, how do you keep the ball moving forward, right? So if we have an issue at hand, even though we're going to have obstacles, how do we get to the next step? That's literally how I run my life day to day.
Are there specific improvements or changes that you would like to see the board or administration consider? And if so, why?
Yeah, I would, I would say that, I believe as a, as a district, if we could be more transparent with the community and parents, that this will allow the community to have a clear understanding of the direction that the district is heading, which would allow the community to decide how they can help in the future in, in regards to referendums or, or anything else that, that may be supported. I believe having that transparency truly is, is the fundamental way to continue to move this district forward as well as provide financial support when needed.
What do you see as the most significant external threats to the success of our schools and students?
Um, this is, I would, I would probably say like, outside influence. Getting like recommendations or advice that may be too far left or too far right. I believe the board has to have people that are kind of just in the middle, right? That like have to understand that, you know, you may not agree with it, but it, but it also may be the right decision, right? So you kind of have to take the emotion out of it. And when you can learn to do that, you will always rely back on the data to make critical and logical decisions.
And what do you think the school board should do to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain high-quality staff?
I think it's very fundamental. You know, I, I can sit here and talk about administration, having a good administration and, you know, having, having all of this curriculum for the, for the teachers. But at the end of the day, it really comes down to just the bare bones. And what do teachers need, right? They need a little bit of age, first and foremost. If you want to, if you want to keep good quality teachers, you have to be competitive. Because the next school or the next district will be competitive, right? So outside of that, I also believe that there needs to be like growth and development courses. Educate, people in education are always willing to learn and they, they strive to learn more than what they currently know. I would also say that a healthy work-life balance, I think, is critical for teachers. I mean, you're constantly hearing about burnout. And how we can achieve that is, in the easiest sense for me to explain, is by streamlining any manual processes that we can. Is it going to cost money? Absolutely. But if we can take anything that is, is time-consuming for teachers and expedite it, whether it's through technology, that's definitely what we should do, right? And then the last part is just retention surveys. What's the feedback from our, from our teachers, our edu, our educators?
What do you see as the current strengths of the school, school district that the board should work to maintain going forward?
I believe this, the, the district is strong in providing like learning environments for students. Different learning environments for students such as like options. And I believe, I don't know if SOPO is still around, I haven't heard of that or not. But you know, having, having a few family members that were involved in that and seeing what that provided and where he's at now was lifesaving, right? Because at the end of the day, he could have went in a completely different direction. And now he's doing exceptionally well. He's playing, you know, he's playing football, like he's very involved in school and he is now wanting to go to college. So there was, there's definitely a benefit and an advantage for every student in this district that they can take, that, that they can be a part of, right? Traditional school isn't for everyone. Something like that.
Okay.
Jason had a windows. There you go.
Restart.
Like looking everywhere, they're looking past me. So I think it's, I think it's wonderful, you know, even, even for the students that struggle. You know, going through high school, I was one of those students. I didn't like a traditional school method. It just wasn't for me. But I can tell you, I've become very successful within my, my, my work-life and my private life. So I think, to answer your question very clearly and precise, I think the direction that, that Elkhorn has gone in, I think they need to continue to go in because it's clearly working.
How do you perceive the district's management of its finances? And if necessary, which areas of the school budget would you reduce if necessary?
I think every district tries to manage their budget to the best of their ability, but there's, and at the end of the day, there's always room for growth, right? And there's always room for improvement. So I, I would say, nobody likes doing like budget cuts or reductions, like it's, it's almost as bad as like firing someone, right? It's, it's never just, it's just got an icky feeling to it. But I, I would probably say, you know, first and, first and foremost is where can, where can we reduce costs, right? Where can we achieve what we're doing, or streamline it in a more efficient and fiscal manner, right? So I would probably say like, I don't know, bus transportation, just looking at something relatively quick. You know, we spend like four million dollars or something around that on transportation. That's a lot of money. That's a ton of money, right? But I only know, you know, I, I can only make that assumption just by assuming. I don't know the facts. I don't know, you know, I don't know the data. It's something that, you know, you would obviously have to dive in and access to, to see if that is, that is the, the right course of action or not. Just seems very expensive to me, so.
Okay. If I have any following questions, if I did them.
You kind of answered one of my questions, but for a sanity check, you, and question two, you're, you said about your decisions are based on fact, data, and taking, taking motion out of, out of decisions. I was going to ask if you were able to do that in the answer later, so I kind of wanted to reiterate to myself that that's really important when you're considering, especially in this day and age, no matter, you know, if there's this outside influence, far left, far right, in your words, if you're able to look at it through a data and facts standpoint, that's, I just, for a sanity check for myself, that's where you're, that's where you're going with that. This isn't based on fact and data.
Permission to, to respond?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it's very interesting because everybody thinks that they listen, right? But the reality of it is, people don't truly know how to listen. People listen to respond. People listen to respond with their emotions. When you can learn to respond without emotion, things become a lot simpler. It's, I don't want to say that simple, I don't want to say that it's an on-off switch or a, or a black and white situation because nothing ever is, is that clear-cut, but it will point you in the direction of what makes the most sense.
Still an echo to people listen to respond.
I promise you, come April, if I'm not sitting up here with you guys, what we're doing, this, this will be much better.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, you can take a bathroom break. We're, 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 we've got plenty of time.
Yeah, his source will be next, but we'll give a, we'll give a bio there.
Did I get to hand you your diploma?
Probably.
Oh my gosh, we're like fifty minutes ahead.
Yeah. The audio will be sound pretty fast.
Yeah. So if you need to, you know, if you're spending water on an answer, it's okay. Yeah, you owe them.
Very good.
Incise, yeah. It's going to be a very good decision. Everybody's been good.
Quick question in this dialogue. What do you use ChatGPT for?
What do I use ChatGPT for?
I just see it on your book for next.
Yeah, for lots of writing starts to be, so for example, I had to do project lately grant reports. We had lots of grants and so I had to do end of the year reports, but it was the exact same grant for all three elementary schools and options. And so I was dreading just having to sit down and write that. So I thought, here's my bullet points. And I said, write me my report and then spit it out and like, you know, I couldn't have written that any better. And really, it's no different than going to, you know, an admin assistant or an OHS or something like that. So then I copied and pasted it and I asked it to rewrite it. You know, it's, it's. So I wrote four grant reports in twenty minutes and probably the best grant report I have.
It's, it's interesting though, because a lot of people really don't, they don't truly understand how powerful AI is. Like, if you tell it specifically what you're asking it for, it'll, it'll actually spit it out in that criteria. It's detailed if you possibly can. And so.
It's, it's, it's as good as, yeah, the input that you put around it. So I use it for that. I don't know, Jesus, if you asked me for a letter of recommendation, you gave me your resume, I just copied and pasted it in there. It's a letter of recommendation for Jesus Ortiz, and then I would go through them personally. I knew that was a fantastic letter, I was having a recommendation with your resume. So productivity.
It's a useful tool.
And then what we found is you have to go through and be AI.
I was just gonna say.
It puts in so many, uh, in English, it's like, it must have been programmed by English teachers.
Yeah.
You know, they want you to use descriptive words, so it's always putting in too many descriptive words. Usually you have to go on Black's actions.
Yeah, I'm really just starting using AI too.
Yeah, that's what I use. Yeah, so that's, I also use it for translation, other than the other translation, even though I speak Spanish, um. We could go and we can answer, translate to Pachto when we have our Pachto family and other pieces, so it's, you know. So that's why I would use it.
Okay. Well, welcome.
I'll be asking your questions tonight.
Perfect.
Uh, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? What are the contributions you can make to the leadership of the district?
I graduated this spring of two thousand twenty-three and throughout my years of high school, I've always been considered a leader. I want to keep doing that for the Elkhorn Area School District. I want to give back to the district that gave me, that the support that they gave me throughout thirteen years of my life. And, um, I just really like to be someone that people sort of just look up to. I want to be a role model. What I want to do for the school is I want to make sure Elkhorn keeps being the great Elkhorn that it is. And I just hope that I can make an impact with my ideas, being a sort of fresh character, if you would. Being someone who has lived through, uh, mo- the most recent of your policies. I just really want to make sure that we get sort of a fresh mind in here.
Hey, if we have several people who know you very well, the reasons why you would make the school board member, what would they tell you?
People would tell you that I make decisions not just for myself, but decisions that are better for everyone else. And the matter of, if I have to make a decision that will either benefit just me or everyone else, I will choose everyone else every single time. For the sole matter that I do believe that sometimes you have to make a sacrifice for yourself in order to make the world a better place. And I, and if you were to ask people about me, they'd tell you that I've been a leader, not only in the classroom, but outside of the classroom. And I've always been making an effort to make an impact on this community.
Are there specific improvements or changes that you would like to see the board or administration consider?
So why? A change that I would like to see is I'd like to see more opportunities to make connection between teacher and student. The connection between teacher and student really makes a difference in the classroom. I've noticed that teachers who I have a better bond with improved my productivity in class. And I think that we should provide opportunities for those same teachers and students to really just get to know each other beyond academics and sort of just build, not, not really of like a super nice friendship, but sort of just like an icebreaker type of thing. Because throughout your years of school, you always break the ice with everyone else, but not necessarily with the teachers. And that would really improve students' productivity in class.
What do you see as the most significant external threat to the success of our school and students?
Two external threats that I see, one is technology. I feel like, um, I know that we had to make, everyone was quarantined back in two thousand twenty and one of the hardest hits was technology. Not every student has access to, uh, highest, high-speed internet that allows you to be in a call with twenty-seven other students at the same time. And I feel like we should just create, I don't know, just, um, find an opportunity for students to get high-speed internet. My second external threat would be mental health. Mental health is a very serious threat to every student and mo- um, sometimes some teachers. And I feel like we should make sort of a change to create a better environment or safe space for students to have a way to express themselves when they're going through any hard times.
Uh, what do you think the school board should do to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain a high-quality staff?
In order to retain and attract high-quality staff, you need to pay more. Um, a good teacher will never be cheap, just like a good employee will never be cheap. And those same teachers will give you the effort that you sort of just put into them. Salary really does determine a lot of things. I've seen that with, uh, my father's business and how different people paid at different levels act. And I'd say that higher, higher-paid people are a lot more responsible and make things work a lot more efficiently for everyone else.
And what do you see as the current strengths of the school district that the board should work to maintain going forward?
The biggest strengths of the district right now is providing better opportunities for students. During my senior year, I took a youth apprenticeship and it really allowed me to understand what my goal was and how I could really better myself in that way. And there is just a big variety that I was able to choose from and I am very happy that I took that opportunity. Another thing is your, your, your ability, your ability to hire s- high-quality staff is something that we should keep. Teachers such as, recent teachers that I've seen such as Mr. Steg, uh, Miss Schneider, Mrs. Schneider, Miss Schneider. And then there's one more. I forgive you, sorry. There's one more, but, but all those teachers really, I didn't really know and they were just as new as me. And other staff such as Mrs. Saunders and Ms. Blair, phenomenal people. I cannot tell you how much they are there to support you. They're not there to get you in trouble. They're there to support you and help you get through your high school experience. And one of the things that I noted about Mrs. Saunders, um, during my freshman orientation was that she said, I am just as new as you are, we, we're going to help each other along the way. That type of person is not easily found. And the fact that she had been there for four years is phenomenal.
Uh, how do you perceive this, the district's management of its finances and if necessary, which areas of the school budget would you reduce first?
I'd say the school does a pretty well job of maintaining its finances and knowing where to invest. I do think that they can do a much better job at materials and other things such as desks. I cannot tell you the amount of times that I've sat in a desk in high school or even middle school and how did that thing wobble from left to right or even feel a little bit loose. Sometimes I wanted to write my own toolkit and just tweak it up, but, uh, I do think that we can do a little bit of a better job there.
Uh, I've, I've got a couple, mainly because I was really interested to hear what you had to say. Uh, your fresh perspective, just coming out of school. First of all, I applaud you for being here. It's tough for a kid that's just graduated, not letting go, it's good for you. Did I read somewhere something that you wanted, I don't know, I, I s- so, I swear I saw it somewhere. You wanted to go into politics or leadership or something along those lines?
Uh, I would be very interested in becoming a type of politician, not just one that works for one side or the other.
Sure.
But the type of politician that would say, hey, why can't we just meet in the middle?
Yeah, yeah, and I didn't mean political aside, I meant like governing or leadership, something like that. Yeah, I thought I had read that, right? That's, that's pretty cool. Um, so you said that you live through some policies, your fresh mind, uh, would offer a, uh, good perspective. Um, you, are there specific examples of policies that you would offer a fresh mind to? Is there something that's on top of mind that you think are that important?
Uh, so the, so the, uh, let's see, the social distancing rule. Not just the social distancing, but, uh, if you sat next to a student within six feet, you were all quarantined, even though you showed no symptoms. Uh, so that was something that Mr. Keel had taught me. He had a wingspan of about six feet and, and there was one time in math class where I was sitting, I'd say, two seats behind a girl. And the desks weren't really arranged how they were supposed to be. I was farther, but then when he did the wingspan thing, even though I was so farther, where the, because they had tape on the floor where the desk should go. That sort of just just included me in the quarantine space and I feel like that was just very difficult for me to be in my house where I have multiple little brothers and it's kind of distracting, they were also quarantined. And it just, it was really, really difficult to learn for the next two weeks there. And it was extremely difficult to catch up when I came back. Because it felt like I should have just stayed home and not even attended class, just because it was that difficult for me to learn. I learned better in person, not online. That doesn't go for everyone, but, you know, we all work in different ways.
Yeah. Did you voice that at all during the time? Sorry, I'm asking a lot of questions from him.
Did I voice that?
Yeah, did you have, did you, did you tell that to anybody? Tell that to Dan, uh, Mr. Keel?
Uh, no, I thought that the rules were rules and I wasn't arguing, I was gonna respect the rules.
But you, your generation, your time is going through something that none of us old people can even imagine.
I'm pretty old school, I mean. No, I'm serious, like, the team that got.
So we, we didn't like those rules either.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's tough for everybody.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but that's, that's part of the job, you have to make decisions that other people may not agree with. Yeah, and I may not have agreed with it, but I thought that that was best for everyone if I just stayed home and quarantined during that time, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Why is beyond your ears?
Totally, I'm old.
Um, the technology, so you had said, um, uh, and this was interesting, when you said technology is a significant external threat. First, I was shocked that a younger person would say technology is a problem because I'm always thinking that technology is, it's all, all younger generations are about is technology, but that we, uh, that kids didn't have high-speed internet, so it was tough to, to get on, to log on. Um, that's a, that's an interesting comment that, did you experience that or did your, did you, your friends experience it?
I did not experience it and I don't have friends that experienced it, but it was things that I would see in my own class whenever we did online things.
Sure.
It's not that a lot of people can't afford it, it's just that a matter of location.
Yep.
If you live out in the country, it's a lot harder to get, well, high-speed internet. And if you have a big family that is, oh, let's say your parents are working from home, the kids are studying from home and you are all using the internet at the same time, you have other devices that are constantly using the internet, that is very difficult to to divide when it comes to the internet processes. And what I meant by technology is a threat is that technology is sort of a, it's tech, technology is a threat to students' education. Not only because it's hard for them to learn sometimes through a screen or even just the wifi issue. It's also because of how easy it is to cheat. As a college student, most of my tests are online and I'm not gonna lie, sometimes I'm tempted to, you know, no lockdown browser, other, but no, I'm there to get my education and I'm there to learn. I'm not there to cheat my way through things, but not everyone may think that way.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. So thank you, appreciate it.
All right, Jesus, what was your apprenticeship and did you complete it?
Uh, I did LANTN.
You had a few rhythm, well, good job.
Thank you.
You did really well too. I need my one question.
Uh, yeah. Right around.
I think there's some on the desk, yeah. All right, last but certainly not least, Gordon.
I'm the last one.
Yes, you are.
Uh, first of all, let me say that if Jesus thinks he's the king of all.
I will make it the same time.
Hello. I'm gonna be doing your interview questions tonight. Um, we'll start right off. Why do you want to be appointed to the school board and what are the contributions you can make to leadership of the district?
I think first I should say that my presentation will be a lot about the fact that I've had forty-plus years of education and thirty-nine years in this school district. And I've witnessed a lot in those thirty-nine years in the school district. I've, uh, witnessed the growth and the setbacks of students and also of the district. My wife and I, um, have lived in the district since nineteen eighty-six and we raised our, our son here and his thirteen years of education, secondary and, and primary were done here and we, we decided this was the place we wanted him to be educated. And we know the success that he's had started here. Um, over the past, over three decades, I've consciously um, have considered contributing to my profession. And that's why I'm coming here is because I think now that I've been retired almost four years now, I have the opportunity to, uh, to have time to provide what I can provide to the board. I, um, have served on a number of state and national organizations and also boards. I was, uh, president of, uh, the Wisconsin Association for Language Teachers. And I actually was on the board for twenty-four years. I spent eleven years, eleven, last eleven years as finance committee chair. And so our budget wasn't as big as the, the Elkhorn School District, but, uh, we had a budget of about a hundred thousand and, uh, we had to make some tough choices. And I can tell you, I know how to do a balanced budget. I'm a known commodity in this district. Um, if you graduated from Elkhorn Area High School between the years nineteen eighty-two to to, uh, twenty nineteen, whether you took German or not, for me, if you graduated, you had to deal with me. And so, and, um, it's always been a pleasure, uh, having, um, children of former students. And at the end of my career, I also had a few grandchildren, but not too many. I think as a former employee of the district, I bring a unique perspective to what the board has to decide. And, um, when I was in high school, I was on the APH's parliamentary procedure team. And boy, have, have my life dealt with parliamentary procedures, so I could be a good board member, knowing the par- knowing parliamentary procedure.
All right. If we ask several people who knew you very well, the reasons why you would make a big school board member, what would they tell us?
That, that's a good question. And so I did, I asked a few friends and colleagues, former colleagues, uh, how they would describe me and my, uh, being a good board member. And the one I particularly liked was they saw me as the calm in the storm. And, uh, I would, the term reasonable was used, that I'm a good listener and accept constructive criticism. I'm a problem solver. I recognize the challenges of our, uh, district faces, meeting the needs of students, families and taxpayers. I believe in fiscal responsibility, which also, uh, recognizes the value and the importance of education. And on, on my end, I would personally add that I feel that I've always treated people fairly and that when accommodations need to be made, I'll make them. That I lead through collaboration and you will find, now that I'm retired, I will always be prepared because I have the time to do that.
Are there specific improvements or changes that you would like to see the board or administration consider? If so, why?
I feel the board and the administration of Elkhorn Area School District has always been a positive supporting body and, uh, always has the best for kids in their mind. I, um, I am a strong proponent of the reserve clause in the constitution that believes that education is a local decision and shouldn't be influenced by outside forces. It's up to us to decide what's important for the district and what's not important for the district. Um, I think it's important that the board be very transparent and make sure that everyone understands decisions, why they were made or why they were not made. And, um, I guess I'll end on that.
What do you see as the most significant external threats to the success of our schools and students?
Technology. Uh, I have two, but technology is definitely one. Uh, unfortunately, our children are being exposed to things that take them away from education. I don't have the answer, but as a teacher, I would struggle to keep the attention of students that had cell phones. And I don't know what policy you can make other than banning cell phones. But, um, cell phone, which leads into social media and social media and, um, unfortunate bullying that goes on in social media has affected a number of our students, which also leads to the mental health of our, our students. And I see there's a mental health crisis in our, not only in Elkhorn, but throughout the nation with youth. And so, um, that's, I see that as a threat. AI, um, that's gonna be a challenge. And, uh, I really see that, um, the district is going to have to make some decisions and change those decisions as they see appropriate because that's something that's gonna have to be dealt with. On the other end, I see that the district has more and more, uh, families that are either on the poverty line or below the poverty line. And I think the school can be that source to break that and providing the opportunity of that student or those students to break the cycle of poverty.
Okay. What do you think the school board should do to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain high quality staff?
I think the district has done a great job of attracting a high quality staff. I've been on a number of, uh, interview teams that dealt with teachers, are hiring teachers and hiring administrators. And in every case that I've experienced, they will, the school has always hired the best qualified person and hasn't gone for the cheap route, finding someone that's just new. And so, um, that, I think, uh, is some kudos to the, the district. I believe that finance is important. But for a teacher, the atmosphere and the mood in the building is extremely important. When you don't feel comfortable, whether it's you don't feel that you're getting support or anything else, you're more likely to, more likely to leave. But unfortunately, more likely to leave the profession, which is right now. And it's scary because, and I've seen this for the past ten years, we have a teacher shortage and we have to do not just the board, but I mean, everyone needs to do a better job of saying, this is a, this is a job that's worth having. And so the emotion, emotional support, I think is as important, if not more important than, um, than finance.
What do you see are the current strengths of this, this district that the board should work to maintain going forward?
As stated before, I think the, uh, hot hiring, hiring quality people and it's extremely important. And I think that's the strength of, of this district. Uh, and the interviews that I participated in, we usually give the candidate a time to ask the team their, their questions about the district. And usually one of the questions that's always asked is, what do you think are the strengths of the district? And I've always stated that the quality of education and the quality of the staff in the district is better than, than you will find in many places. And so, um, that, I believe, is one of our strengths. I, and this is why I'm bringing up the past history. When I started in, in nineteen eighty one, we had a broken education system, not just here in Elkhorn, but throughout the, the nation. We were geared more to the college bound student. And if you did not, uh, fall into that, you were kind of left behind. And now, I would say in the past ten years, uh, we are now addressing as many students as we can and with Avid, with Project Lead the Way, with the Options, uh, uh, program, with the Career Academy. Every student should feel safe and receive a good education. And I think we should be very proud of that in this district.
How do you perceive the district's management of its finances? And if necessary, which areas of the school, but which you reach first?
I feel that the district has always been financially, um, uh, has always managed the finances very well. I have no doubt that will continue. But the failed referendum, uh, the board and the school are gonna have to make some decisions because that was dealing with operation. And you're still gonna have to operate. And so I would say, um, not so much, uh, what to get rid of, but what to keep. You definitely want to keep programs that are gonna keep, we're gonna bring money to the district. And one area that the district has very, uh, has benefited very much is dealing with, uh, open enrollment. I personally experienced that because I would have a number of students from other districts in my class simply because other schools don't offer German. And so offering, offering programs, uh, what we already are, I would say, key. As for what to eliminate, well, that's a hard decision. Those decisions are gonna have to be made. But you have to look at what isn't cost effective and what's not, uh, what's not going to keep the education going in the district.
I have one. Um, uh, question three, you said that there were uh, be transparent about why decisions were made or not made. Um, I, I actually really like that statement. Caught a little bit of heat when, when you do that, but that's, this transparency. Um, but then you said that, uh, decisions made end on that. Can you not end on that and say, and expand upon that? What do you mean by that there, it felt like there was something more you wanted to say? Feel free to say if there was a particular decision or something in general.
No, I, there's nothing like that.
Okay.
I, 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 in every case, that whether it's, whether it's a teacher or whether it's an administrator or whether it's the board, transparency, the, um, the misinformation that gets out there. Um, and we, we heard, I mean, I heard that with the last referendum and there were people that were making decisions on whether to vote for or against it, simply on what they were told by people, not by finding out. I feel the board, the administration did an excellent job of promoting that referendum, going to the schools, going to the families, going to the, to the, um, organizations like Rotary and things like that and letting them know exactly what it was. I, there are some people that unfortunately are not going to not get the message and still vote.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's nice to see you again. I don't know if you remember my boys.
I do.
They're not boys anymore.
I can say as a former student, I didn't have you in German, but it's very hard for me to address you as Kyle versus their course.
What I found with former students and, and I walk my dog around town and I come across former students. I say, if you can't say Kyle, which is fine, just call me here. Hair is fine. I've been hair Gordon before.
Yeah.
All my adult life, so I'm perfectly okay with that.
Something I would, I guess, I would, um, share or recommend the board do even prior to getting to that first ballot piece is, um, I would just like to go on record and say that, um, thank you so much to all of our applicants and everybody that came and interviewed this evening. I'm thoroughly impressed by every single one.
Everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm not lamenting the fact that I don't have voted this. It's a, it's a really hard decision for lots of wonderful people. And whatever the decision or the outcome from the, the school board is, I know that we do have, um, board elections that come up and I know our former board president went through this process, mad about who's the position is that we're filling. And he wasn't selected for every position and then he ran and that's, but it, I'd have gotten motivated to run to, to be on the board because he wanted to be. So regardless of the outcome, I'm very, very excited with the pool of people that we have and I don't think the board can make that decision out of this group, so. True. And I think maybe before we get to that ballot selection, I don't know if, you know, when we interview candidates and Kyle said in a number of those conversations, what I like to do is focus on, you know, have the people, if they want to make comments or focus on the positives of the different candidates that they saw and that, you know, and have that discussion or anything, just go right to voting and then have discussion. If you want to pare that down, sometimes we'll pare it down to a top three or four and then have the discussion.
Yeah, I think paring it down makes the most sense. I think that's kind of what we went through last time and we kind of, we kind of, you know, voted for three.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's get the three out there and.
You know, and you, are we gonna like, give them like, like your best candidates a three, your second best is a two. And then it kind of naturally kind of like,
Yep.
Gets us to a consensus.
Can we have just a few minutes to review notes and review things before we fill out that first ballot?
Yeah.
Like five minutes?
Five minutes, enough.
Is that?
Julia, trying to make one comment.
Sure.
Um, while you're, while you're relaxing and doing that.
Yeah.
You've got the challenges with budget and all that kind of stuff, you know, that hard decision.
Yeah.
What you're doing now is gonna be a difficult decision, probably as difficult as that. So you get to take a deep breath and put that over there for a while. Do something different for a night and go home and enjoy it.
Thanks for reminding us.
Oh, your phone.
I need that.
So when I got a point, like almost everybody stayed, um, till the very end.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Well, now I forget which one's which. Did you get?
That's mine. The half eaten one.
Oh.
Well, yeah.
Thought I was about to get blamed for not eating half your cookie.
No.
But you couldn't.
No, my cookie is intact. It's my chips that are half eaten. All of a sudden I am hungry again. Yes, that'll be great.
Thank you for getting this lunch.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, way better than a cheese spread.
Only file when directed. No.
I'm never gonna let it live that long. Six hours in a room, here's your, here's your couple slices of cheese.
I really sprung for that. So I saw the little, I had that inquiry from Gateway Office. I, I needed to play those plays like the means.
Yeah. Twenty grand, where the food must go?
Well, when you looked at the, you have to look at. This guy didn't, he came out to about ten dollars a person.
Which. That's great.
Thank you.
I know a smattering of like three or four words in every language.
A little, a little German?
No, see, I wanted to know. There's a few amount of words, like, like four or five.
I don't.
That's you, you, you win, man. You've been, sorry, my mom.
That's good. That's good.
And I know you all know that it's just apparently the way I ever since you know that. Even though nobody's here, it's still an open line.
Can we have like six of them?
No.
Alright, so I am not advocating for this, but when the world's like, why is, why is Elkhorn at seven? Because a lot of other schools that I've seen have like nine plus.
Districts, a lot of it goes back to the history when they were set up. Usually when you have a nine, yeah, they went that large, but they consolidated the schools, some of the other districts. Like when Elkhorn was a city school, they may have only had three board members back then. I don't know, like Brighton is a small case. They have three. I don't know what Paris has where your uncle lives. They might have three or five, yeah. But a lot of it has to do with that consolidation. In some districts, they'll also have and glad we don't have this because they have a harder time filling seats sometimes where they're districted. So like the board member has to come from certain districts.
I've seen those, yeah.
Yeah, there's like city council.
Yep.
Has to. It makes sense why they do that, but superintendents who are districts like that, they often will have headaches because they it's part of finding someone willing to run some things.
Confident in our top three, we can just write it on the ground, is great.
And well, how are you waiting that so they know for the isn't.
So I would put your top person on the top line and then go down from there.
Oh.
Because the top person's going to get three points, the second person will get two points.
Did we do it that way last time? I don't think we did.
Then it will be better if you do it that way. You'll get a consensus after.
Okay, yeah, because we had to go through several iterations. Yes, I don't, I don't think we did it that way.
Nope, we didn't. I've got four.
Okay, that makes my decision even harder.
Just give like someone a point five and a point five.
You have to say that that influence a vote or anything, but that kid, that interview.
I know.
Just as a recent graduate.
He's very impressive.
Phenomenally.
He'll be, he'll be, he's going to go places.
Yeah.
He really is.
Really like the way the kid presented himself. That's tough at plus eighteen or nineteen.
Is, yeah, he's a genuine good.
It's the only one, not that I wouldn't have shit, everybody's standing, everybody's still dead. He didn't have any kilt.
I I wrote that on the note. He did that with no notes.
Yeah. Are we we're going to wait for the for the three and then we'll discuss what we can do?
Yeah.
So how does this working now? Are we going to break it down to three or is it like whoever's at the, if somebody makes the top, that we're just automatically pick that place? Because we're doing a number of seats somehow.
No, because you have to do a
A single vote, yeah. But she's going to show value, then she'll tell us that like a pile of three words.
Yeah.
All of them, if you want.
So finalize that you, we have to have a formal motion and four of the six actually.
Okay.
Nobody asked for that individual.
Because what what happened in the past was that I don't speak for myself, is that there are some people I was on the, I was on the edge on. All I could see there was consensus coming and I just said, you know, I'm good with that.
Yep.
And I changed my vote. But it was out of the you know, it was like, you know, you had like three candidates, for example.
Yeah.
You're not picking, you know.
Out of, out of thirteen or whatever it may be.
The option.
Yeah, there were, there were a couple four members that maybe when it came to the final vote, may have voted for something that they didn't have on the first.
Correct. Just hope nobody votes for Vayner. What happened in the House of Reps today?
They voted for Vayner?
Yes. Are you kidding?
No, that's serious.
You know, it was really, when we went and did the we were asking to present the President of the United States, sent us out a group of students twice to the same building in DC to present for a STEM legislative awareness. Like, great experience for the kids to sit there or going through, they got a meeting on that. It happened when Speaker Ryan was in the Speaker's office. And it was really neat to it's incredible to see how politicians open up when talking with people. And will say things that they would never say
To an adult?
To adults. But he talked about how because when he went into Vayner's office or because there was, who was it? Between Vayner and Brian? Was it there someone?
We're supposed to try and leave now?
They went, they went in and then Vayner.
Got it. So we turn into you.
Such a, Vayner was such a prolific, sadar smup, smup that it was just so permeating. Tons of money to de-smokeify the Speaker's office.
Yeah.
So they could even tolerate his image.
We also didn't have you last time. Joey.
True, true story.
Because I remember Matt and Johnny sitting here having to like make all the challenges. Yes.
I would have been on right in the head. Was that the index card of sticky notes or something like that or was it?
It was like sticky notes.
Yeah, I think it was sticky notes.
Yeah.
Like I saw it. I was watching the interviews.
It was like little pieces of paper.
I give Jody all the credits. She suggested a, I'm going to do that. Yes.
It's a, I mean, this is, this was a long interview. I watched, I was watching on the news this last election cycle where you had that that stuff with the board president up in up north. Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, when you're an accountant for that long, you just write. But well, they, they were voting for the board president and they were, they were doing, they were writing it down on paper like that.
Oh.
Where it's just notes. Um, and there's like four of them ended up speaking afterwards and like, did you vote for him? And it turned out that the the Jody physician had been writing down another person's name. Oh, yeah, she got immediately canned. That was. I know, no, no, you're right.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, I did hear about that.
Yeah, and she got, she got immediately canned as soon as they found out about that. They read the thing or they did read the vote and everything's good now, but.
Yeah. I didn't care about that.
It was pretty crazy.
This is thinking of everybody that's social media.
You know, I almost thought it was interesting. Because that's the first person to bring up, mental health with Texas.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have to go through my notes and find out. I know I wrote it down. I just don't remember.
He's the first one that brought it up, and then the only other person that did was Mr. Hair Gordon.
Was that?
Mr. Hair Gordon.
I was correcting myself.
I hear Jody, I hear somebody ringing the doorbell.
Oh, my God. How did you hear that?
Please tell me those are the voices because you have super hearing.
I was going to say.
I may be wrong, but like like I swear I just heard a doorbell.
Wow.
No, just don't let my wife know that I can hear that.
Yeah.
Yep, there it is. Yeah, he was. I just went through it all again, Julia. Yeah, he was the very first one. Nobody else even mentioned except for.
I know.
Super impressed with that gift.
Yeah, super.
How did, how did you guys do it with Devin? Was Paul here to do it?
He was on. No, he wasn't.
Can you vote for?
No.
He wasn't here. Yeah, he was not here that day.
He was not here.
Yeah.
Yeah, he wasn't online either. He wasn't alive.
So he couldn't vote?
I don't think so. I don't know. There's online right now. People maybe speak to that. I don't know.
Jason's got everything muted. We wouldn't be able to hear it anyways.
No, I can speak up.
I got muted. I see you talking.
Yeah, I was on a medical at that time.
Yeah, yeah. I just wondered how the protest worked if you were able to vote.
Um, I would not have been able to vote.
Got it.
Really had fun. And we also had somebody missing. We only had five people.
Yes. Yes. I remember. Only five people.
Two people.
Who was, who was missing?
Danny was here.
I was there.
I was here.
Matt, it was, had to have been Matt.
I was here.
No, Matt was here. Then everybody was, Ed was here. Ed was sitting right here. I remember that. So everybody was here except for Paul.
Do you want me to announce?
Yeah.
Barb was not.
I don't know. The person that I replaced. I mean.
So that's why we went down. We went down to five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That makes sense. That makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm like going around the table. I'm like.
So the, the top three from a points standpoint, but also yeah, well, I think that is kind of important. One, two, three, four, five board members all gave at least they had this individual on their top three, and that was Kathy Kostak. Um, she had a total of eleven points and had five of the six voted for her at some level. Number two was Jeffrey Bartelt ten total points right now and five of the six placed a vote for that individual. And then it really drops down where a lot of the others got, everybody got at least two votes. And you know, we're in the top three, so every single candidate was in the top three, somebody, at least two people. Um, so the next one was in the top three for two people and had a total of five points. And that was Brenda Johansson. And because it was very similar, I would say that the one after that was Kyle Gordon that had four points and was voted on by two. So two of them had five of six votes, and then the next two closest had two, were in the top three too.
So by points, Kathy, Jeffrey, and Brenda are the top three?
Yeah, Kathy eleven, Jeffrey ten, and Brenda five.
So points wise, Kathy and Jeff are the top two.
Right, and by far had the most board members that had it in the top.
Got it, okay.
So that might be where we want to have a lot of discussion unless the others were kind of divided to each.
Right.
Okay.
Julia?
I mean, you would, you want to. Julia, I mean.
I thought you wanted to throw another ballot at it and see what happens.
Um. Let's throw another ballot at it and see where we land.
But you want to narrow it down to those three or do you want?
Yeah, do you want to go to two?
Or or do you want?
Oh, yeah. I'm just saying.
I would suggest we vote for the top two.
Top two.
I think that's a good idea. And how do you, you.
Because last time you did that, some people who weren't, did really flip.
Right.
Okay. So top two still considering everyone or top two just considering the top three?
Well.
The top two.
I think we should. We're the top two.
Kathy and Jeff.
And then just do a single, so do a single vote for one or the other?
One or the other.
Okay, got it.
And then we'll see where we land.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so I mean, are you okay with that, Julia? I mean, so what Ed's saying is we're going to do a vote right now for that one person right now.
Out of the top.
Out of the top two or the top three?
The top two.
Out of the top two.
Out of the top two.
I think the general consensus was Kathy, Jeff, and Kathy were just so high.
Yep. And I, I don't have a problem with that as long as you made it.
Yeah.
So vote for one, either Kathy or Jeff, is what we're doing right now.
Okay. So this was round two, right?
Yes.
I learned that their process is called daisy chain.
What is?
When you pass things. I didn't know that, so literally.
In the military, daisy chains, you take extension power cords and you plug them in, you plug them in.
Well, that would make sense.
Yep. If you're not supposed to do it, which is the causes fires.
Fire safety.
Causes fires.
Which is perfect.
Exactly.
Neither do I. It's my life always goes exactly to that. But kids won't eat them if I can buy these ones.
We should have had a slot for next time. We should have a slot to print your name.
Yeah.
My bad.
No, I got yours.
Do you have a bad signature?
It looks like.
It's, it's when you're writing, you're like, it's when you're, when you're doing accounting in the. You're writing all the time, just constantly. It just, it gets worse and worse and worse.
My husband, I think I'll change.
So you know, when I was in El Salvador, culturally, they were really offended by my signature. They'd be like, that's not a signature because people could tell the signature. That's just you writing your name in cursive.
Oh.
You know, like a signature is something very, someone can't easily.
Jason, I have to say this because I've never thought about this before, but like my youngest was not taught cursive in our schools. And he went, in order to enter the military, you have to have a signature. They will not allow you to print your name as your signature.
I will say.
Signature.
I will say not taught or not taught well are two very different tensions. Because we still knew that cursive was part of it, but it's not like when we went through where we spent a lot of time.
Oh, my God.
I literally had it. I'm like, Spencer, you have a practice and signature.
I could do a signature and both become good bodies.
Well, and then my middle, when he was playing colored sports, he had to have a signature as well because he had to sign basketballs and give kids autographs and stuff.
Um, we do have, at this point, after marrying down to the two, Kathy received four votes and Jeffrey received two. I don't know if you want to have specific discussion on it or if you want to move right to a motion on it, you've got to have and it doesn't mean just because you didn't vote on that that you can have a unanimous votes. Still, but I don't know first, if you want to have a discussion on it at first.
So I mean, I mean, I get, I, I would like to have a little bit of a discussion.
Sure.
Um, only, the only reason, I guess, but you want to go with the positive, right? Not with anything negative, which is fine.
Yeah.
Um, so I love Jeffrey. He was, he did a great job. Um, I, I love the fact that he's moving here to Elkhorn. He's starting a family here, starting, he brought his family here. Um, he's just getting off of his tour of duty after 20 years. Um, and he's doing education right now for the military, which is great. Um, I think my only, the reason that it kind of helped me back a little bit was his nine months left in service. Uh, giving that nine months. It can take a while. Um, and it can take up time, and that's the only reason why I, I ended up going with Kathy myself. So. It, it can take a while, um, and it can take up time. And that's the only reason why I, I ended up going with Kathy myself, so.
It could be voluntarily extended should anything escalate.
Yes. And that's, again, that's part of the reason why. I mean, I, I thought he was a really great candidate and I really hope to see him in the future.
Yeah, I agree. Two hour commute.
Yeah.
Should pass that.
Not anymore.
One hour each one.
Until, yeah, and until he's done at Great Lakes, he has an hour there and an hour.
Yeah, he's going to Gertie Mills.
What happens then? Oh, is that where this?
He's going to Gertie.
The Great Lakes.
Yeah, it's, it's just.
That's on a Monday night.
That's where I stand though, so I mean.
I liked both candidates.
They were, they were my top two.
Yep, they were. They were my top two as well.
Uh huh. They were mine as well. So.
Was there anything else from everybody?
Is there any other discussion that you would like to have? Hearing them, then I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we, I, we're going to be appointing at this point, correct? Right? Okay. So I move that we appoint Kathy Kostak, uh, to the open, uh, school board position.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. It's the movement second to nominate Kathy Kostak for the open school board position. Will call vote please.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reddles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion is approved, um.
I love that we did a long.
Alright, what was, really like, I just missed the fact that Jody didn't give me the script to read.
You could hurt your body. You've learned so well.
Alright, um, I want to thank everybody who attended this evening. Um, I'll ask Jody, we do have a short, a very short closed session. Um, related to, we need to adjourn to, um.
We do have a closed.
At her.
It's all my fault.
Administrative positions board will not reconvene in open session. And so, I'll, if you could give Kathy a call and let her know.
Yes.
Uh, she would be, will, do we have it on the agenda for Monday?
Yes.
We'll have it on the agenda to officially seek her out. Alright.
Um, sorry, make a motion, join a close session for a person to discuss state statute nineteen eighty five, prayer one, parents see to discuss fulfilling of an administrative position, school board will not reconvene in open session.
It's been a second to adjourn to contemplate a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statute nineteen point eight five. Prayer one, parents see to discuss the filling of an administrative positions, school board will not reconvene in open session. We have any ball call vote?
Yeah.
Ball call.
Uh, Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reddles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.